All the meeting back to order at 7:21, Chris?
Right.
Okay, and we're gonna start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chris, is there any correspondence?
There's not.
Okey dokey. Any public comment? Thank you, Marcia.
No.
Okay. Consent agenda, does anybody have anything to extract from the consent agenda? No? Okay.
Both approval.
Second? Second? Okay. All right, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. PTO, I don't see PTO here, so Dr. Stella.
Ooh.
Yep, moving through.
Well, it was a pleasure welcoming the children back on January 5th, I believe, and it's a pleasure welcoming you back too. Good to see everyone, our school's in operation. And let me start by asking Ms. Crisco to give a Beecher Road School update.
Welcome back, everyone, and happy new year.
Thank you.
I do have, you heard from student council not too long ago, so as they've asked me if they could give me an update to share with all of you on the things that they've been doing, so I'll start with that. The building school culture activity of the good morning reading was a success. Students and teachers did their best to greet each other in the morning and to start their day with a positive. There will be another positive activity coming in February, and the student council hopes to have, once a month, one focus on just to help make it a more enjoyable day and start your day in a good way. Also, the commitment to sponsor a young child from Bolivia, a neighbor of Brazil, has been voted on by the student council and will be acted on, thanks to our introduction by Senior Wolfson, one of our Spanish teachers. The students are practicing their Spanish literacy by writing to this young man, and his name is Victor, and the communication will continue back and forth. You can see our board in the north office foyer, all about Victor. And a special note and thank you, some of the money from the successful December Book Fair has helped to sponsor some of this. And student council suggestions were presented to the state school client group in order to help create a peaceful and calm environment for our students on the bus, and they are taking some suggestions on some ways to help children have a more peaceful bus ride. So that is a student council update. And one more thing to add, just for a school update, I'm not sure if anyone has a first grader, but something that's just a little bit of the magic of Beecher that we always like to share, and that's first grade magic. And when students return from the winter break at the start of the new year to their desks, they find sparkles and sprinkles on their first grade desks, and the first grade teachers share that as first grade magic, because magically, reading and writing and math become so much easier, and they learn so much more when they come back from winter break. So I leave you with a little first grade magic, and thank you.
We could use it in all the grades here. Thank you very much. Well, January is turning out to be a very cold month, but I'm starting, and I'm so happy to say this, my 10th year as superintendent, but looking back in those years, this is the first winter, first winter, we've had a lot of cold and not-so-cold winters where we haven't had to change anyone's classroom because of the, because of lack of heat. I'm knocking on wood, I'm doing anything that's possible.
There you go.
But anyway, it's a way of, a good excuse for me to once again thank the school board and the boards in the town and the citizens of Woodbridge for supporting the children at the school. We're not finished with the upgrade, we hope to be finished by December 2015, but it's making a difference already, and so we appreciate that very, very much. Now, I'm not complaining, but we superintendents have been up very, very early on a lot of days. It usually starts at, well, it ends very late at night, looking at the reports, getting the meteorologist's reports and so on, it usually starts at 4:30 in the morning. We have to make our call, usually we make it by 5:15, by 5:30 the latest because of the high school buses. So I tell the television audience, we try our best to make the right calls on what's happening. We have an anticipated cold spell coming up, so please, parents, continue to dress your children warmly. We have a policy with our school nurse as far as when they go out to recess, when they don't, that kind of thing, so we wanted to, we have a warm building, so we want to take good care of our children during these cold months. Also, instant alert, we want our parents, well, parents, so we have a pretty good response to that, but if you're not signed up, make sure that you are, because that's what we use. I'll also mention the fact that our extended day program is doing very, very well. It's another one of the unique features of Beecher Road School, because it's, as you know, it's staff by staff members, people who know the children well, take a responsibility and will watch out for them if a parent is caught in traffic, getting back, whatever, before-school program, after-school program. I'm happy, Kathy Salernati has informed me that the Beecher Road School Drama Club, through extended day, will be putting on the play Follow the Ill-Overed Road to the Land of Oz, and that's anticipated that that will take place on April 9th and 10th through the Drama Club. There's usually a great response to that, and usually a standing room audience. So please save those dates. So basically, that's my update, part of my update, let me move on to the next part. We have report card on the agenda. Now, when I came in nine years ago, I looked at the report card and I said, oof, this is outdated. We are behind with our reporting system. The report card, by the way, is one of a more comprehensive reporting system to parents. It's not the only way we communicate, but it's a very, very important one. So we are behind, we are a bit behind with that, and purposely, I'm thinking back, Gina, of when we had our interviews for principal, now, what is this, your 10th year here, or your, oh, your 3rd year? Your 3rd year. I remember we had a cast of Dalisans interviewing for Gina and the other candidates, it was in the south Assembly Hall, and all questions from all sides, and one of the questions that keep, kept occurring was, what's your experience, or can you handle an important report card initiative? And of course, Gina excelled in her answers with that, and she's been a lead person in working with the, with my office, but with the administrative team and with the staff in developing a report card. So we're gonna roll that out in March. So the point is, the report card is long overdue. I've gotten different statistics on it, some says, say that our report card is 20 years old, I've heard 30 years, whatever it is, it's outdated. We're behind other districts in the updating. And the way I think about it is, every, every one of our children is a wonderful, unique human being. It's very, very hard to communicate what a human being can do with an A, or a B, or C, or a D, and research just doesn't really support that. So our new report card, to say the least, will, is more detailed and will allow a much more comprehensive conversation about the child, and that's what we're aiming for. We're looking for that ongoing conversation, not just, not just that reporting time, but that ongoing conversation of who is this wonderful child that you've sent to our care We are going to have, Gina will give you background on the process that was used in developing this year, how the staff was involved, number of other details. We're having a Parents Academy in cooperation, collaboration with the PTO, combining it as a PTO meeting, and it's an informational one, it's gonna be on January 29th, is to get the conversation going, and we hope so that people will have a chance to share their voices and so on, especially about the language of the report card. Besides giving a general little presentation, we hope to have small group kind of work too, and we hope to do a lot of recording of questions that parents generate, so that we could take them from that meeting too, and fashion it into our district report on frequently asked questions by parents, or questions asked by parents. I'm not sure if it's possible, we might look into the possibility of a webinar too, to get the dialogue going out there. And, but Gina, why don't you give your report, and I'll add anything else I can, give an executive summary.
Thank you. And Dr. Stella is right, this has been a long time coming. To have a good discussion for many years, and during my hiring, yes, that was a question, so I knew right away that it would be a focus, but I was given the first year with, at that time, the new administrative team to take a look and to listen, and then we really started last year to kind of get this, this rolling, and it's been about a year and a half, as Dr. Stella said. But how did we start? We started with some key members of the faculty, the administrative team, Dr. Stella, and looking at some of the research behind standards-based report cards. And then we talked about what was our purpose. It was a communication tool for parents that actually reflected what we were teaching, because the current report card that we had did not have that same reflection. An example, math concepts is on the report card. What exactly does that mean? So what we wanted was something that really explained to you, what are those concepts that your children are spending six hours a day here with us, learning? So we wanted it about the faculty. So we do what we do at Beecher, we started a committee, and it was open to all members of the faculty. We have about a dozen, a dozen members, also with some folks that we've gone to to ask questions and reached out to to come and help us, but about a dozen core members of the faculty that are a cross-section of the school, specialists, coordinators, classroom teachers, and administrative team, so that special education is represented. I consulted with the BOA districts, because we are behind, they are already there. Orange was there a year ago, and Bethany started it this year. We researched and reviewed some other districts, Westport, Kane, and North Haven, Cheshire, just to name a few, all standard-based. And then we said, okay, what is it that we want to say? Which of those standards, and how do we want to look at the standards, and make them, in a meaningful way, in a tool that can be presented to parents? So in our committee, we drafted at each grade level what we thought were the most important pieces to tell parents. And then we brought that back to the faculty in our first draft, and said, okay, this is where we are as this cross-section of the school. Now, in your professional learning communities, please look at this. What can you do with this? What are we missing? Because more voices, the better. And we took all of that feedback back to the committee, and then we revised. We analyzed all the feedback and we went through another, and said, okay, let's put this back out. We put it back out, and we thought we had some pretty solid grade-level work for the standards. So then what did we get? For the summer, we said, okay, we need to kind of make a guide for parents. What does this mean? What is this report card? So we had a subcommittee work in the summer to draft what is going to be the report card overview. So a guide for parents to why a standard-based report card, what does it tell you? And we worked on a scoring rubric. We looked at many, and there was discussion and discussion on what, what would that look like? And we developed a three-point scale. We will share all of that information at the Superintendent's Academy for Parents. We will have templates for you to look at, and we are still tweaking some things. But once we did that, we came back to school, so all of this work had taken place over the course of last year and this summer. And we wanted to be ready, now that we had the grade-level standards, we wanted to be ready to look at them 1 through 6 across the whole school, because something that I, that was lacking was consistency. Different grades and different reporting systems, so we laid them literally next to each other and looked across grade levels to look for consistency. Consistency in language, are we having that vertical alignment? So we did that. We brought that out to the PLCs again, and we made available every grade-level report card, the standards, not in its visual representation, every grade level, we made it available for every grade level. So a 6th grade teacher can look at, what are they doing in 1st grade, 2nd grade, 3rd grade? So we have to think about all of our students, our students who receive support, our students who maybe are excelling, and how could we talk about that? So there will be a place for there to be some personal narrative about our child, a child who might be really excelling in math, and what are you doing for that child? But who maybe in writing needs a little bit of support, and what are you doing for that child? We made sure that that was, we wanted to keep that personal. We also wanted to keep a few other things very unique to Beecher, we value the arts, so we will remain with the standard that we use now, the tool that we use now as, as reporting system. What are the PLCs working on currently? Something that really has come out of this is, we are digging in deep into the standards that we teach, and what tool do you use to assess that and evaluate that? And what does it look like for a student on that scoring rubric? What is it, what does it look like for a student who's progressing towards the standard? Meaning, we're giving them a little support, they'll get there, but they're really well on their way, or a student who's met that standard? And we know this is a first time out, and it is a big change. So what mechanism will we have to, once we put it out there, and, you know, the second term and the third term, what mechanism, what we have to take a look at, see what's worked? And maybe what needs some changes is that committee will stay intact. We will continue to meet with teams after the first rollout, after, at the end of March, and we will meet again for June, and look at what's worked. We will talk to PLCs. I want to make sure that I mention that we are a workshop model school, and I did confer with districts that are also workshop model schools. We met with our consultants from Columbia University and had them look at the standards. It was actual, actually a beautiful professional development day, we had a grade level represented from every grade, and the units of study that we use in readers' and writers' workshop are aligned. So for us, we were able to look at our units and make sure that what we have and what we're reporting on the report card matches what we're doing in reading and writing. We felt that it was important to do this in math also, so we are working with a consultant from ACES to help us do the same thing in math, to make sure that what we're reporting to you is what is happening in the classroom. So we will come back, we will spend some time doing some revisions at the end of this year, probably using one of our professional development days at the end of the year to get all that feedback. And at our parents' evening, we're hoping that you will ask questions. If the tool is not clear and easy to understand, then as a communication tool, it's affected. So we will ask that of you.
I just want to emphasize a point that you made, that there was an effort, and I thank you, Crisco, to reach out to all constituency, professional constituencies within the school, special education, mag, primary, upper grades, specialist, classroom teachers, and so on. And the administrative team was heavily involved too, in, in the work of this year. We had a number of meetings on it, and we did look at, at the researchers what was out there, also with what the predominant research was saying about reporting systems.
Yeah, a little more than. Yes, we talked about a digital report card. Parents will still get a report card in hand, so you can still make that copy and hang it on the fridge. And we've done a lot of work with, our school's our, our reporting system, it's just our data management system, and I've done a lot of work to make sure we can build what we need. But the benefit and the power of having this be digital from our end is that we aren't asking the same question in 20 years. And as we grow, the report card can change, and as we change, the report card can grow. So I think that will be something that will be an added benefit. To quote one of our teachers who's a parent, he said, yay, I would be so happy to get this home, rather than what we have right now.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Hold, sorry.
Go ahead. I was just wondering, do you have any method, or are you considering doing anything to get parent feedback after the report cards come out this time, just to get some input on how it was received?
I think that's a great idea, and I don't have a method at the moment, but I think that we will probably develop something after first, or maybe even after second term, because the, the standards that we use, some go through the whole year and some are reported in a finite time, so I think that that, thank you, that will probably be very beneficial for us.
In our initial interaction, although it's before the report card is out, we're giving it to them, we're really interested in trying to document what the type of questions that they're asking, that'll give us some, some understanding of what they find, and what they're thinking about the report card too, so that's gonna be valuable as a first step.
It will also help us in, you may get some things from teachers that say, in reading, this is what we worked on this term, in writing, this is what we worked on. If, if you're looking at the report card and you still have questions, it'll help us tell the teachers what it is we still need to tell you.
So I assume that for each of the standards, it's kind of a proficiency, or is it a progress measure that you're?
It is a progress measure to a student who either has met the standard, the benchmark standard, is progressing towards that, so met with some independence, you know, instructions in private, student responded, and can master the standard with a level of independence as far as someone's-
So it's sort of against an objective of some kind, rather than against their own progress, in this case?
Yes.
Correct. And then are they also, are there overall subject grades?
No. Sorry. Is that it for you? Yeah.
You do? Okay.
Is the plan, is the same report card, K through 6, did I miss that?
It is not the same.
But I'm saying it's this, it's gonna be the same, standards-based.
Yes, so consistency, yes. And, but the standards vary from grade to grade, so while math concepts might be on many report cards, what those concepts are will be different, and no, the report card does not say math concepts.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Crisco. Okay, the next item I'm going to point out is the open choice. This is a standard topic that we bring up this time of the year, each year. As you may be aware, the statute, state statute requires that local boards of education indicate available open choice seats annually. It's part, part of the interracial plan, or the harmony plan that the state has initiated a while back. We currently, we have traditionally had 12 students, which we accommodate easily, because the breakout of classes enables us to do that, and we've listed in the board brief how many on each grade. We anticipate that there'll be two openings for next year, and our policy has been to start children at kindergarten, so that they really become integrated with the school and are a part of the school family. So this is brought to the board every year, for any discussion, and seeking your approval.
Sure. We move that we continue our participation in the open choice program and allocate 12 slots for the 2015-16 school year, with any vacancies beginning in kindergarten.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Okay. Thank you.
The next thing on the agenda is the calendar, the 2015-16 calendar.
And before, before we start, start with this one, to an extent, it's formality for the board to approve the calendar. Our input in the calendar is what we tell Dr. Stella about what we like and don't like, he brings it to the BOA meeting, and what comes back to us is the compromise of what every board has, you know, told their superintendent to go fight for, and we end up with a compromise. So we do have to approve the calendar, it is required, but at this point, all of the discussion and all of the input that the board would like to have into the calendar is what Dr. Stella brings to the meeting. So again, if we have comments for next year's calendar, we need to make sure that Dr. Stella has all of our input, so that when he goes to the BOA meeting to discuss the calendar, he has all of our wants, and we end up with, you know, a compromise between what everybody wants.
And Mark, what I'll say is, next year's 15-16, 16-17, unless things change, by the state statute, will be following the regional calendar.
Now, that was supposed to be for next year, wasn't it? That was supposed to be 15-16, but then it got pushed.
They pushed it out since.
So this is not the regional calendar.
No, but it's, 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 there's connections with the nature, it's moving us towards that, so you'll see connections with that.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
Not that I am in disagreement with it, but I thought that because of the school construction schedule, we were gonna start after Labor Day, but that we are actually gonna start the week before Labor Day this, two weeks. Labor Day's really late, it's like the 7th, so we're actually starting-
The 31st.
The teachers-
But that's a, I'm glad you brought that up, because even when the superintendents get together, it's not all agreement, all ones, we have to have, reach a consensus, and there's a give and take, and actually, some of the districts wanted to start, start earlier, and they, and just they, they agreed to go with the 31st because of the upgrade situation here. So that, that was a concession to us.
So we make a motion.
We did.
Will we do it?
No.
That's right. That's the last one. I don't like the calendars.
Okay. Somebody make a motion here, Steve's not gonna, because he's-
Be immediately opposed.
Yeah.
We approve the 2015-16 calendar as presented by administration.
Thank you. Second, okay.
Now we can discuss it.
So everybody has a copy of the calendar. Emily, did you have another question?
No, I just, I just want to clarify this on that.
Yeah.
And I have a question, what's the November 3rd? I mean, that's an unusual one.
Yeah, it is, again, you're sharp, you're picking out the right things here. We had to reach a consensus, both districts started later for us. We're agreeing with it with the 3rd, it's election day, and, you know, some, some districts have election at the school site, the school's supposed to be closed. But also, the districts wanted to have a common BOA PD day, where we could start working closer together as far as our professional training, especially the specialists, you know, areas like the arts, science, music, things of that sort. So the 3rd seemed, was supported as, because the schools, Orange Schools had to close on that day, so we went along with that, so that would, that was a concession to the BOA districts too, but it would allow us also to work as BOA districts in tying together our professional development.
Because there's, there's usually a couple days that we have different in the other districts, like the Thanksgiving Day.
Yeah, that's by contract, Thanksgiving's by contract, so on the 25th, that will give the parent community an extra day for Thanksgiving, and it'll be used as a professional development day at the school. That's written on the calendar.
So we'd have a couple years with this very short February break, is that the direction that we think the regional calendar is going?
That's, that's, that's where they are.
Are you seeing a lot of absences right now from the list? Are you concerned at all about the health impact of not having that break?
Well, in the past, we used that as, as one of our concerns, but I'm not overly concerned about that most of the time. We seem to get snow days in, and things of that sort, so, fortunately, I wish we didn't, but we seem to get our fair share of that. That kind of clears the air, and, but what we have, fortunately, thanks to your support and town support, we have an excellent nursing department here, and we really try to keep an eye on any kind of things that are breaking out, things of that sort. There's always a plus and a minus to it.
Okay. Any other questions? Anything you wanted to specifically mention, we've all had a chance to look at the calendar. Okay, all those in favor? Steve? Okay. You got that, Marcia? Okay. All right.
I want my February vacation.
Great.
Cafeteria.
Yep.
Another very important topic, ongoing conversation. I want to start by acknowledging the work that Jane Roddy, our cafeteria manager, and her team of cafeteria workers, acknowledge the hard work and dedication to our children over the years. And under some very restrictive parameters, including government regulations, volume, time and space, they, they do a good job of watching out for our children and serving lunch to hundreds of children on a daily basis. We have 800 children, nobody walks home for lunch, children will bring their bag lunch, but lots of children will have lunch here at the school. There are four lunch periods, that's concentrated and so on, so it's amazing how many children they feed on a daily basis. I also want to acknowledge the initiative that Mr. Pullo, our Director of Operations and Collaboration with Mrs. Roddy, has initiated over the past year to improve the cafeteria program. Then I want to say some more about the initiative that I'm proposing. But Mr. Pullo, can you highlight a couple of the key things that you and-
Thank you, Dr. Stella, and I'm gonna piggyback, if I may, on your opening statement, because the food service program in any school is, is a program that gets a lot of, a lot of attention for a variety of reasons, and we're no exception here at Beecher. So over the past little bit more than a year, we've reached out to some partnering communities, sort of a, you know, what are you doing that we could learn from, and, you know, an idea exchanging. Mrs. Roddy and I visited some neighboring districts, including the Amity System, Trumbull and Monroe Systems, specifically their elementary schools, taking a look at not only menu, but operations, what they were doing, how are their lunch lines set up, how are their serving lines, are there salad bars? Surprisingly, there, there wasn't as abundant a salad bar as we have- Surprisingly, there wasn't as abundant a salad bar as we have here at Beecher. And that was further supported that when we had our Sixth Sense review, which is a USDA program, Beecher was acknowledged as extraordinary by the state for the number of offerings, the type of salad bar for an elementary level school. So we learned some, some good things, you know? We're not doing, there's always room for improvement, but we're not at the state where you're gonna throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak. For example, last year, we introduced approximately 13 new, new items, some winners, some losers. The new items included cherry blossom chicken, corn dog, pork riblet sandwich, and whole grain chicken tenders, again, just to name a few. And we introduced the new menu entrees with a pacing. You don't wanna saturate the students, overwhelm them, and, you know, as Mrs. Roddy would certainly articulate much, much better than I if she were here, we have a very outspoken consumer group that comes through our lunchroom on a daily basis. So they let us know what's good, bad, and indifferent. So again, just to summarize, we've reached out to our partners, looked to see areas for improvement. We put those in. We also acknowledge that it's a continued work in process and there's, there's always better opportunities. And we're very fortunate to have the network of neighboring districts. We've also engaged the services of a consultant who has extensive experience with school nutrition, both in Connecticut and New York. She's currently employed with CREG based in Hartford. It's the Aces of Hartford, if you will. And she's been very helpful to us. We've charged her with a few top goals. One, menu enhancements, opportunity for menu variation while maintaining compliance with the USDA guidelines. There is, there is a lot of restrictions placed upon us, but we've also asked her to look at our operations, look for areas of inefficiency and improvement, look at our kitchen, you know, are there ways that we can enhance it? It is what it is. As adults, they say, you eat with your eyes first. Children are no different. So anything we can do to better the environment, to better the lunch experience is a goal of ours. And also, we've tasked the consultant with the district as part of normal routine is up for its administrative review, which is every five years, I believe. And again, it's a very stringent state program, but the state is reporting up to the USDA. They come in and not only assess your menu offerings, but they look to your financial operations. How is your purchasing done? Are you in compliance with the government commodities? It's a very extensive, extensive review. And so there's a lot of preparation involved in that, and we've done that as a normal course of business. But again, having a level of expertise of this outside consultant to help us assure a successful review, and that review is scheduled for April.
However, these are very positive steps that have been taken, but with that being said, we understand that the, the topic of what type of food should be served in the cafeteria is a critical issue in Woodbridge, as it is across the country, is a topic of conversation. So we're not coming with a solution, but we have a proposal for our solution. And I'll call it the Food Evaluation Project. I would like to form a superintendent's task force to report back within a designated period of time to the board. A task force that has enough members and representative members to share ideas across, from different angles, different sides of the circle, but also small enough to move quickly and to come up with some solid recommendations on key areas. The members of the task force, I would include Mr. Pulo as the Director of Operations and Jane Roddy, of course. I would ask for a minimum of two board liaison members on that too, who can serve as a link with the board. Bring medical representatives on, perhaps our medical director will reach out to her and our Director of Nurses here at the school, PTO representative. And again, a mean lean kind of team that could take some, some essential questions and really dig deep into them and then come back to the board with some insights and recommendations. Considerations in making recommendations could include things as, well, first of all, I would recommend that we have parameters on our discussing, discussions, because we have to work within the parameters of the school. We have four lunch periods, they're 25 minutes each. We have 800 children in the cafeteria, we have certain kind of space and so on, and we have a certain kind of budget unless the board wants to intercede with that, to raise it or lower it or whatever. And also, we'd have to work within state and federal requirements. The healthy food program is only one set of requirements that apply to public school lunch programs. So it would be a question of taking a good look at what are, whether the requirements, what are the ones we could push aside, what are the ones we have to conform to, and also working within the requirements of the pre-reduced lunch program, which is, which is growing at Beecher Road School from the past. And understanding the existing program and identify positives in the program. But with that being said, then we want to take a look, I would suggest anyway, to the committees, that we look at what are leading, what are some of the public schools, leading public schools doing that's different that we could learn from? Mr. Pulo mentioned visiting some other districts. We could also do internet searches and things like that to go across the country and identify, are there public schools that are doing something that we could learn from? What are possible entree versus à la carte options? Mr. Pulo mentioned bringing 13 different kinds of choices on, but there might be other kinds of things as a collective group that we could talk about and what would be necessary to, to do it. A key topic, I would think, would be the pros and cons of participation in the healthy food program. And again, we could come back to the board with the pros and cons. We could identify potential areas, identify areas of potential change in the existing program. We could look, but we'd have to look also at the impact of any changes on lunch costs and/or budget, and that's important. Also, the staffing impact, if any. And then I want to put on the table the subway request too, so we look at that from different angles and come back to the board. Also, Mr. Pulo, I would say the current role of the consultant, and do we want to use that consultant or anyone else as far as bringing us information or it will be important in any way? Those are, so those are some initial ideas. Of course, I'd like to have the blessing of the board with that, and I'd like to move fairly quickly with it. And I would say, I think it might be reasonable to come back in May with some solid recommendations. If there's any change in that timetable, either before May or after May, we'd share with the board.
Okay. Did you have?
No.
Okay. And I just want to echo a little bit of what you said. You know, the cafeteria staff serves a lot of kids with all, you know, very specific desires and everything else, and they do, they do work hard in the cafeteria, you know, to make things appealing to the kids and, you know, and that works sometimes and not others, so. Are there any comments about the, the task force, the timeframe? So, you know, I know there's, there's definite interest on the board. Did you want to try to identify board members tonight?
What I wanted to just throw out there too, I believe it's important to have a real commitment if anyone wants to serve on it, commitment of time. And I would think we'd have to fashion it if we want school participation too. Can, we probably have to be in the afternoon hours, you know, after school sometime too. So we would be looking for any members for a commitment of time to come into the meeting so we could have a continuity and move ahead.
I have a question.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I understand. The consultant that's already on board, is she on board for the purpose of the April administrative review or is her scope broader than that?
I'm sorry, Karen. What about the administrative review?
So what is the scope of the current consultant's work? Is it specifically for the April review or is it broader than that?
Well, the administrative review looks at compliance with menu. So, for example, you're, you're limited on the number of grains, your level of sodium, those types of items within a week's menu. So they come in first and foremost and do the recipe, you know, they randomly pick the week, do the recipe analysis to make sure that there were no overages in the daily allowances and then the weekly totals. In addition to that, they look at the staff operations, knowledge of serving protocols, what a reimbursable meal versus a non-reimbursable à la carte item is to make sure that the staff has that, that level of knowledge. So the scope and the time that's involved in the day-to-day, I mean, that's ongoing. Mrs. Roddy training her staff in what a serving size constitutes and what methods and protocols to serve. The menu analysis, that's a little bit more in-depth, but again, that's something that's ongoing with Mrs. Roddy. And this consultant really is, is helping with, with a deeper nutrient menu analysis to check for any potential flags that come through. It's an independent state reviewer that comes in and does that, and then also looks at the business office records, you know, what are our methods of collections, what are our verifications to make sure that what we submit to the government on a monthly basis for reimbursement is a verifiable and inaccurate. They, they look to make sure they're, that districts are used, are accountable, that the level of accountability. We're fortunate with Beecher, we put our point-of-sale system is computerized. We have the online parent feed, so we're not doing things like in the olden days, for example, lunch tickets that could have a little bit of an accounting irregularity. The system in and of itself by the register entry and the, the sale recording and the cash recording, it's all pretty much seamless, all inclusive, so to speak. So I'm not sure if I over answered your question, but-
I think, I think maybe part of the question was, we're using the consultant to help with this audit. Is the consultant available for other work as well?
Absolutely. Yeah. There are multiple.
So the consultant could be involved in the task force.
We could tell like a laser, I'd say, this is what we're looking for.
Yeah, so if you were asking if this person had some background that would be useful on the committee, that person could be used for that.
Absolutely. That's, that's the intent.
Okay.
To fashion it.
Okay.
So that's our report on the cafeteria update.
Okay, so again, did you want members identified now? Because I think we can do it.
Sure.
Okay. So who's interested? Lisa? Karen?
Steve, was that a hint?
No.
No. Anybody else?
I got enough to leave.
Okay, so Lisa and Karen? Okay.
We'll be in touch with you very shortly. Also, I added, and we mentioned, we'll have an administrative representative working with Gina. She's designated Nancy White. Nancy White is in the cafeteria a good part of the day, and she's also very knowledgeable about-
It's a resident expert.
She's in the cafeteria, that's the key, I think. Okay, did anybody have any other discussion on this particular item? So, you know, you'll make sure you have input from anybody else on the board that you think, you know, is looking for input.
That's the idea, you know, even those who can't participate, at least we have a connect, direct connection and input to this.
How are you gonna solicit parent involvement or?
We'll have a PTO representative who's been in-
Interested in these issues?
Yeah, really interested in, has demonstrated a knowledge base too. I don't want to mention a name because I have-
Guess they say no.
But absolutely. And again, we're trying to keep it the right size so we can move with it, you know?
Is there any crossover with wellness committee?
A number of the people on this, who are small committee, will be on the wellness, so we'll make sure there's a connection. But, you know, judging by our dialogue, we wanted to, you know, this reaches a level where you want to be really targeted and just move along, have as many meetings as necessary, come up with some solid recommendations, reach by consensus.
Okay. All right. I think that you're at the end of your report, Dr. Stella. No?
Yes, I meant to, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, facilities, Karen, did you have anything?
Yeah, this is a very brief update of our January 8th meeting. We got an update on the building project, mostly work that was completed over break and is ongoing. We also received information about custodial staff who put in significant time over the break dealing with continued deep cleaning as a result of the water issues. Dr. Stella, correct me if I forgot that wrong, that's my understanding. And we got an update on tools for schools. The walkthroughs were set to begin at least that week. And we also got a brief update on sustainability initiatives, which involve the stewards, sixth grade stewards, and also initiative started by a Girl Scout troop to make sure that every classroom had recycle bins, and those have been ordered and probably have been delivered and put in place by now. I'm done.
Sorry. All right. Building committee, I think we, we've gotten through your report, an update on where things are at with the building project. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Stella about the-
Just for the television audience, it was a huge crane that was here over the vacation time that lifted a, a huge chiller onto the roof. It was something to see, and that's the start of our air conditioning system for the school.
Eighteen thousand pounds breaks in. Okay, finance, Steve.
So you all approved all the reports already? And the only other item of business was, we have the auditor coming to the next finance committee meeting to discuss the annual audit.
Yeah, he may not be able to come to the, because of his calendar, so the February 1st, correct, Al?
Correct. We haven't been able to confirm. I'm glad you know that he's at the town Board of Finance meeting.
Okay.
By the way, you know, this ties in with it, Steve, I hope you don't mind me interjecting here. February 3rd is the budget presentation, the board budget, so we're presenting the board budget. But I believe that the auditor is coming that night also to support the town.
Because it's their regularly scheduled Board of Finance meeting.
But we're gonna ask him to come to the, the school board finance committee meeting as well.
Okay.
Did he say February 3rd? Okay. Cave, Lisa?
Weather canceled the Cave legislative update for our area last Monday. I was gonna tell us what was going on, but things are just starting to get going up in Hartford. They're starting to figure out what education goals are being pushed forward.
Okay. And then upcoming meetings, update on differentiation. The only thing I'd ask is, to the degree that you have kind of classrooms, concrete examples, that's always just helpful, you know, just to give an idea of what's going on in the classrooms more than, more than anything else, we need that update. And I didn't have anything on math. Did anybody have any requests for next month?
So on differentiation, similar to what you're saying, but just how it's being done sort of across the board, because, you know, that some teachers might do some things and some teachers might do others, but is there some sort of consistency between how everyone does differentiate students, especially in math?
So Carrie, our, our attempts to have an alignment across the board. And what your sense, you know, we're not asking you to tell us what teachers do and what you're-
Right, no, no, no.
But a sense of, you know, are we, have we penetrated 80% of the classrooms? Are we at 90%? Are we at 50%? Yeah, where we are and where we're going with it and what the end product is in line.
Yeah, and that crosses over into the math update since this year is the year of math as well. Differences in subject area.
Here are the examples of it.
We've got, we've got different things going on in what goes to.
I would just add, how is the administration overseeing the extent to which teachers are or not doing differentiation? And is this where we learn about variations in homework and theories?
I think that it's, to the, whatever extent that homework's involved, classroom work, you know, small group work, whatever, the update would include, if there is information on homework that's happening, that would be helpful as well.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, I think this was the issue that we spoke about was anecdotal differences in how much homework in, within grades, or I guess in, in one grade among teachers. And we're just trying to understand what are the commonalities, what is the expectation, and how is it monitored?
And is that, and I don't know if that, are we including that under differentiation? Because we talked about that quite a bit as one of the things we wanted to hear.
We talked about that quite a bit as one of the things we wanted to hear about. I mean, should that be a separate thing? Well, I'm not sure what you're asking. If, so we have guidelines in terms of amount of homework per grade, and there's variation, so if it's up to 50 minutes, say, or whatever, you know, a given grade is, there's variations by teacher, by night, by whatever. So, that's not really differentiation to me. That's more our policy and what variation exists within that by classroom. Is that what you're asking about, is actually assigned work?
We discussed the review of the homework policy and whether, number one, you know, whether that, is that still appropriate? Is there any change in thinking in terms of that, but also, what we talked about, and I thought there was a consensus on, was we have a policy in place, but there's widely different application between and among grades, and how could we understand that, the reason for that, if there's something about that that needs to be changed?
Okay, so I think that's different, the differentiation. I think differentiation in homework, there are some questions there as well. Well, I think differentiation in homework is a differentiation issue, but if you're just talking about how many minutes of homework kids have by teacher or by grade, then I think that's a different discussion. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure where that ended up, so we'll figure out what we need to do to get that on the agenda, but I think that's a separate issue. So, I don't know that we'll expect that for next, well, we won't expect that for us. Was there anything else for the...
We won't forget about it, though.
For the upcoming meetings, was there anything? Anybody else have? Okay. No new business, right? Public comment?
Marcia?
Move a German.
All right. You decide, I'm just kidding. Okay, all those in favor?